While the Jackson County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, March 17th, to order. Pledge of Allegiance and invocation led by Commissioner Darius Williams. All rise.
(inaudible) 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 Let us bow our reverence in the manner that we practice. Our heavenly Father, we come to you now first in the life that you've given us thus far. We thank you for how you've blessed us and how you've kept us thus far. Father, even though we're in this trying time, we ask that you would just watch over us, that you would give us exactly what we need to endure this time. We ask that you would calm our hearts and our minds, and I'd be able just to focus on the things that are most important. I'd be able to rally our families together, rally our friends together, but most ask you to help us as we continue to run as a county as we move through this time. Bless this, uh, this meeting. Help us to, to conduct the business as you see fit. Righteous name. Amen.
(inaudible) Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
(inaudible) Bear?
Present.
Herr Walz?
Present.
Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner?
Yeah.
Mahoney?
Present.
Here. Let it be noted that Commissioner Tompkins is excused for medical reasons and is watching from at home. Need a motion to approve the agenda? Have a motion? Do I have support? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We've arrived at public comment. Public comment guideline, each individual will state their name, have three minutes to address the board. You may only address the board once under this public comment opportunity and may not yield your time to others. Board members will not debate nor answer questions at this time. Public comment is now open. Any public comment? Any public comment? Public comment is now closed. We have a special meeting of the General Government Committee, Parks, Lime Lake County Park easement. Philip? Special meeting?
Microphone.
Special meeting by General Government Committee, Assistant Parks Director Kyle Lewis.
And if I may start us off by saying that, uh, this was not on the committee meeting because during the parks meeting, there was some question as to this easement between, I think it was the Drain Commissioner who had raised the issue about the easement, uh, which required us to, uh, discuss with him offline, um, the legality of this and that and the other. Uh, and the Parks Board recommended approval and sent it on to us. So what the Drain Commissioner met with, um, Bruce, and Bruce you can probably come up to, and explain what the Drain Commissioner's objection was and what the outcome of your conversation. And of course Kyle can give a general overview first of what it is. Please Kyle.
Sure. Thank you. Uh, essentially Spring Arbor Township is building a one-mile trail from M60 south along Teft Road to connect to the Falling Waters Trail. Uh, it's a mile long, like I said, about the last tenth of a mile goes through Lime Lake County Park, uh, to connect to the trail. Essentially, we're talking about the, uh, the dive site right there at the curve at Teft Road. Uh, construction is planned, uh, for this summer, uh, planned to be completed by the fall. Uh, we did work with Spring Arbor Township and their engineers to, uh, determine the best route to impact the park leased. Um, we feel good about the route. Uh, this is through a grant that Spring Arbor Township received back in 2017. At the time, uh, the county Parks Department provided Spring Arbor Township with the letter of support, uh, and it basically stated that, uh, the ultimate approval would come from the Parks Board, as well as the, uh, county boards. So that's, that's the, uh, state that we're at here now. Um, we, we thought about bringing this back in April, but Supervisor Herline from, from Spring Arbor Township was a little concerned about jeopardizing his grant. So that's, that's the reason for the rush. Appreciate you putting this on, on the agenda tonight.
And Bruce, if you'd be so kind as to share with the board Jeff's concern, uh, and the outcome.
Sure. Um, to keep it brief, uh, he raised three concerns with me. Uh, one of those was easily taken care of. He said the, the easement didn't properly state the width of the easement. That turned out to be that he just didn't have page three, which has the legal description and the thirty-foot wide description. Uh, so he was happy once I provided him with that. The second thing was more of a difference of opinion. Uh, there's a phrase in there that says, uh, "The easement over the boat and properties for the use and benefit of the public and may be assigned or transferred in whole or in part to another public entity." He didn't like it being able to be transferred to anyone else, thought the township should just hang on to it. Um, in an email that he sent, he phrased that as a, "That's illegal, you can't do it." I talked to him, "It's, it's legal, you can do it." And he, he acknowledged that. It's just his opinion that it shouldn't be. I took that into account when I wrote the easement. That's why we included the language about a public body because really the biggest liability to the county here is if the trail ever gets discontinued, who pays to rip it out? And the language that's in here puts that on the township and would keep that on whoever they might transfer it to. So if it's limited, limited to being a public entity that they transfer it to, we're guaranteed that it's somebody we can find. It's not a, a nonprofit that's gonna fold and then we've got nobody to go back on. It's somebody that's, that's gonna be there and that liability is limited as much as possible. Um, and then the third thing was that he just didn't feel like the easement was necessary, that we can just let them build the trail and that's fine, it's a public trail on public land, and why do you really need an easement? Uh, the answer to that is simply that the DNR requires it for the grant. No easement, no grant. So, I'm happy to take any questions on those.
Thanks Bruce.
Yep.
Mark? Is there a real question? Go ahead Tony. Microphone Tony.
Thank you. If, if it's county-owned property and we're giving the township, Spring Arbor, an easement, my personal feeling is that should be permanent. I do not like the aspect that they can transfer to somebody else. I would prefer that that clause be stricken, uh, from this agreement. Um, time crunch, this is something that always annoys me. You had talked about bringing it back in April, but now because somebody else didn't do their stuff in a timely manner, and now it's urgent. Well, now if the board doesn't prove it, then the board is shutting down their project, Failure to plan their stuff properly and bring it on time does not constitute an emergency on our part. I'd prefer to tell this guy, wait. Every other entity that brings stuff needs to, in my opinion, needs to bring it on a timely manner. I've, I've seen this in so many documents. Well, you got this deadline board, you gotta take action now. No, we don't. So, I don't know how we do this. I would prefer that that clause about the, uh, transfer just be taken out entirely before I can personally support it.
And the, what I'll say in response is that if that's the pleasure of the board, that's an easy amendment, and I can make that amendment before it gets signed. If...
Thank you for your statement, but you're not on my committee. It's not to the full board yet Tony, it'll appear under the full board later, under item fifteen later, so you'll have a chance to amend then. Okay, if, if one of the General Government Committee members is not interested in amending it at this time. Kennedy, Commissioner Mahoney. Falls. Falls, yeah. Questions entered with the committee members? Breathe.
No brief. I'm interested in what Mr. Overton thinks of Mr. Snyder's concerns.
Uh, to be frank, uh, Mr. Snyder is one of, uh, how many people on the Parks Board? Ten people on the Parks Board who were, he's one who raised an objection. The Parks Board heard his objection, uh, went ahead and approved it to go to the full board regardless. Uh, we took the interest in having, you know, Bruce who drafted the language meet with him offline, and we did put it on committee because we wanted to give them time to consider Mr. Snyder's objection. Uh, we've considered it, we don't believe it has merit, and we brought it to the full board for further consideration.
I think that's a reluctantly. I'm curious how, uh, or who wanted the language in there about the reversion, or only being able to transfer to a public body. Is that something that somebody specifically wanted, or is that boilerplate language?
It was boilerplate that was pulled from another easement that we previously used on a different project, but I did specifically think about the, the public entity versus the, the private entity issue and put that in on purpose. But it was me, nobody asked me to do it.
And if you were looking ahead and there was a, well, if, if that language was stricken and there was an issue with it down the road, and, uh, whoever we're giving it to no longer wanted it, would it revert back to us automatically or not?
It's an issue I'd have to take a closer look at, but off the top of my head, I'd say if ownership of the trail transferred, then ownership of the easement would go with the trail. The easement's given for the trail, it should belong to the trail. As, uh, Mr. Snyder pointed out in an email, easements generally are attached to the land, not to a person, or in this case, a township.
Thank you.
Did that complete your action for your committee this evening, Mr. Commissioner Duckham? Thank you. We're now at item eight, approval of the minutes of the February 18th, General Meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Do I have a motion?
Order.
I have support. Any questions, corrections, deletions? Being nor hearing none? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Drive at the Consent Agenda, Public Safety and Transportation. Uh, Consent Agenda for the whole board, excuse me.
No move.
Of a motion and support. The items for removal, other than, E, under ten, B, Department of Aging Senior Millage Ballot Proposal, under General Government, item C, American One Event Center, D, Parks Resolution McCabe Trust, Parks Resolution Iron Bell, or any other items to further Animal shelter? Nine, B becomes C for you David. Items from Human Services, or the item, and B becomes fourteen, C. Standing Committee, General Government, item D is Parks, American One Event Center, item E becomes Parks Resolution Support McCabe Trust Property, item F becomes item E from eleven E, Parks Resolution Support Iron Bell Trail, Mike Levine. There are no other items for removal from the Consent Agenda. We have a motion and support. Madam Clerk, could you post?
Yes.
Mr. Duckham, without your electronics, are you for or against the adjusted Consent Agenda? Commissioner Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First up, we have appointments. We have three committees looking for appointments. None of them had applicants nor recommendations from committee. The first one is Community Corrections Advisory Board. It's a workforce development designation for the appointee, and again, there were no applications or recommendations. If there's no nominations from the floor. Then the next would be the Region Two Planning Commission. It's for one of us to be appointed. Again, there were no current members. The old saying true, if you're not here, be careful what you get appointed for. Uh, if there's no nominations from the floor, the last is the Emergency Management Advisory Council. It's a citizen-at-large. Again, no applicant and no recommendation from committee. And hearing no nominations from the floor, that moves us to the claims. You'll recall that, uh, last Monday during committee meeting, none of the claims were ready because of a printing glitch. Uh, they were presented here. Uh, I see Darius is looking through them now, I think they're ours. I've looked through these, and at least Rodney had, I'm not sure about Tony and Phil, but uh, I just made a note with a question on one thing, if we could have a motion to pay the claims, that would be a good thing from committee members. Motion and support? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, the same. Motion carried. Uh, lastly is the Animal Control Ordinance, uh, which is modified several times. I think the last time it was modified was 2008. Uh, there was a lot of thought and deliberation put into it by, uh, staff and others prior to getting to us and committee. Uh, Tony had some concerns about a number of issues. I came in and spent time with him and Lydia and Deb, and we got through all those. Tony had some good suggestions, and most of them we agreed to. Uh, so, if we can get a motion, and then we can move on to Daniel's concerns. There's support?
I have a motion and support.
Motion and support.
Yep.
Yep, and then, okay. And Daniel, I'll recognize you if you've got concerns with it.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, now, to be honest, I just, uh, this was a, a pretty long document with a lot of changes it looked like. Um, and I think my major concern was it looked like it really mostly just targeted dogs, uh, that, that people own, and I really hadn't had that much time to look into it, was hoping that we would be able to give, uh, some additional time, uh, for me to, to study the changes in this document. Um, if not, I understand, I would just have to vote no on it because I kinda feel like it's just strictly targeting people with dogs.
Well, I could, so I could clarify, Daniel, it is the dog ordinance from nineteen thirty-four? Am I correct? And there is not a cat or, or other ordinance? Um, it does take into account bears, wolf dogs, and parrots, and it does not take into account cats in any way, there is no cat ordinance at all. Uh, we're only allowed to deal with, with dogs that are owned. Allowed to deal with dogs running at large because we have no one to deal with. Why, we have animal control that impounds them and follows the pathway to destruction if that's the, what happens if the animal cannot be found to be, uh, adoptable. Fortunately, that's what we as the county have to do, uh, under this. I do appreciate where you're coming from. Um, I feel you still need to vote no, I have no problem with that, but I still, then I would get with Lydia and maybe David, and have a discussion so you can appreciate. But it's, the ordinance typically mirrors state law, and a majority of the changes to the document are state law that we are implementing. Um, the definition of vicious dog is used instead of a specific breed, because the state legislature has still founded, that they don't have a breed that they wanna pick on, they wanna pick on vicious dogs. Um, so, that's the pathway that this ordinance came from. It's pretty much a cleanup of a document also, because of the millage, and the fact that we have a standalone millage to help us with animal control. And if you'd like to, well, we can make arrangements to sit down and meet over it, but, um, whatever your comfort level is, Commissioner, on this.
Mr. Chair, I kinda took your job away. I called for the motion and support and got it, and then I recognized Daniel, but...
We're all good, we're all good.
That's all you, so you can take it from here.
Thank you. Commissioner Mahoney, further questions?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you, and thank you for the comments. Uh, one, I guess my concern is, uh, again, I personally haven't had time to go through this, I just noticed there's a lot of changes in there. Um, the, the second question I would have, is there, uh, uh, any urgent reason why we need to pass this tonight and not give a little additional time for me to be able to kinda do some research into this?
Uh, would be based on a motion from somebody who would like to postpone, would be action that would need to be taken, sir. Otherwise, the board will then vote on it. It's been under administrative review, or... Six. Yeah, and then, into committee this month, I suppose, if you can get five votes, sure.
No, no, my question was, is there a reason or some urgency that we have to pass it tonight, was my question.
I don't believe so, but again, the way to, to weigh...
Thank you.
Yeah, the way to do it is, is the pathway I gave you. Yes, sir. Remember, once you make the motion, we stop debate.
Understood. I would, I would like to make a motion to table this until next month.
Please make the, please, may I clarify? Please make the motion to postpone because tabling lays it on the table, but does not empower it to do anything.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone the vote on this until next month.
Okay, is there support?
I'll support it.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Now remember, you're votering, you're voting on the postponement for one month. Those in favor of postponing? Could be appearing, appearing in front of you, Commissioner Duckham, you may show by hand motion which way you are. Motion has failed, so we're back to calling the motion?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, what was the vote on that?
Five-three as stated by the chair. Now we're back on to your full motion, is there any further questions? Mr. Elwell?
Just, just a comment. I know a lot of work went into it, I appreciate the hard work by Deb, Lydia, the animal control officers, and I think you had attorneys looking at it too. Uh, this is, I think, my third round with the animal control ordinance since I've been here, so, thank you.
Certainly. Any further questions? Commissioner Bear?
I started out with about twenty-five questions on this. I did have a meeting with Lydia, and Dave, and Deb, and we went over all of the issues that I was concerned with, and worked them all out to something that I am comfortable with. So I appreciate the time that the other people took to work with me. I did accomplish getting some of the things changed that I wanted, not all of them, but I appreciate your, taking your time to work with me. Thank you.
Any further comments? Bear, could you post a vote? Ordinance passed seven-one. Vice, Vice Chairman Elwell?
That's all to report, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Standing Committee, Human Services, the doctor's not here, their vice chairman is, Commissioner Mahoney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First order of business under Human Services is gonna be item A, appointments, uh, for appointments tonight. Uh, first on the docket is, uh, lifeways for secondary consumer. Uh, expired member is, uh, Mr. Shopwell Senior. Applicant is Mr. Shopwell Senior, and recommendation is Mr. Shopwell Senior. For a motion?
Any, any nominations from the floor? Any nominations from the floor? Hearing none, we have a motion and support for James Shopwell Senior, recommended by Commissioner Mahoney? Correct? All in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Commissioner Mahoney?
Uh, we still have a open seat on the Veterans Affairs. Uh, the next item is gonna be Department on Aging, oh, I'm sorry, do we have any, do we need to look for a, okay. Uh, Department on Aging, uh, Advisory Council, uh, we've got an expiring seat. Uh, applicant is, uh, Felicia Rot Richmond, and recommendation is also Felicia Richmond.
Any other nominations from the floor? Those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry.
Uh, we've got a whole host of seats open on the Sanitary Code, uh, Sanitary Code Board of Appeals, uh, as well as the MALPH Board. We have one open seat, uh, that will take care of appointments. Uh, next item is gonna be item B, uh, looking to, uh, uh, looking for a motion to pay the
You have a motion? And, and support? Any questions? As always, if you have individual questions, please initial them, and staff will get with you to answer your questions. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Right, thank you, Mr. Chair. And then the last item for business for Human Services is gonna be item C, uh, which was removed from the Consent Agenda, uh, the Department on Aging Senior Millage Ballot Proposal Resolution. Looking for a motion and support, and then we can...
Looking for support. We have a motion and support. Right, Tony?
Um, village issues like this, my preference would be to have all of them on the November ballot. November gives us our biggest voter turnout, gives us our most accurate representation of how the public feels on these things. Um, they had talked about, we, when they come to the commission back in February, they said they'd put it on either the August primary or the November general election, and now they're locked into the August primary. I would like to change that, so it goes on the November general election. Uh, that is important to me, I think it should be important to our citizens that we get the biggest representation. Um, also, the way the millage is written, I don't, I need, maybe the, uh, somebody tell me if we can really do this. Village proposal says in the second paragraph, "If approved and levied in accordance with state law, a portion of the millage may be distributed to the downtown development authorities of the City of Jackson, the Village of Grass Lake, and Village of Springport, and the Townships of Blackman and Leone, and the local development finance authorities of the Village of Parma, and the Township of Blackman, and the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority of the City of Jackson." This is a county millage for the county Department of Aging.
Okay, before I, before I walk down this pathway, you understand how LDFAs, Brownfields, and tax instrument financing are funded?
No, Professor, I'm asking this question to get some clarification.
So, so I'll give you the clarification, and if you, here's what happens. They draw a line on the millage line, okay? And has the property enhances in value and the, and the effective amount of revenue is in... is increased, that amount of money then goes to that agency. Money of the value of the property prior to that stays and functions at the millage at the county level. So, the gap in appreciation, all that they're getting, and it's only within the boundaries of that LDFA, Brownfield Authority, DDA, any of that type of stuff, it has nothing to do with the county as a whole. It's within the boundaries of those documents, just like tax increment financing does, or TIFs used to when we had, uh, the property credit under personal property credit, and factories would have the floor traced out, and the stuff inside the yellow box got the tax credit, and the stuff outside the yellow box did not get the tax credit. The same rules apply with DDAs, LDFAs, and Brownfields. The stuff inside the box gets the tax credit. And then those agencies are supposed to utilize that money to pay for enhancements and development of that property. So, that's how the Blackman LFA was able to buy the land to create the new industrial location on County Farm Road. That was how the city is able to pay for the parking structures at Consumers Energy, because they use the DDA's funding to pay for that, and that's how that enhancement came about. So, it's only that level of money. It's not the whole county giving money to that organization. It's just within the boundary of that item, and it'll be has of when the millage begins to be collected after the evaluation of the equalization evaluation is done of the property by the county equalization officer.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
It's also accurate, I think, that that specific language is in state law, is it not?
That's correct. That's where it comes from.
Okay.
And in truth and, and in truth and voting, we place that clause in there. Some organizations choose not to, we choose to. Yes, sir.
All right, well, I thank you for that explanation. That made sense to me. Um, part of the PowerPoint Department of Aging presented, one of the slides was, said, "General Fund no longer avail, General Fund no longer available for senior programs due to county's budget situation." So, on their pie chart, where they showed that $743,000 of their operating money came from the General Fund, they're saying that the General Fund next year is not gonna give them the same $743,000.
That's correct. That's the budget you voted for.
All right.
So, what you could do, what you could do is get five commissioners and vote to instruct the Administrator Controller's Office to pull $800,000 out of General Fund services, give to the Department on Aging, if you choose to do that. But he needed to use that 243 thou, or $743,000 to balance the county's budget with everything else that we're doing.
All right.
That's why we took the millage rate to .6%, because then the Department on Aging is fully funded by a millage and can't be touched, or services can't be cut by the Board of Commissioners. We lock it in place, that our seniors will be properly taken care of.
I agree with taking care of the seniors, being that I am one. Fortunately, I'm thankful to God I don't need many of their services, but I am glad that they are there. Um, as it's been described to me by a few other people, that the, uh, the General Fund, the county general tax, is supposed to pay for everything. And the millage is kind of a second tax, if the tax the second time to pay for a specific program.
Then you'd have to go back and repeal the general millage to the county as a whole for it to be able to do that, because of the reduction in headly and the math from Prop A on homes. As Christopher and Michael have explained to you, whether it be road funding, or it be the General Fund of the county. The only way that we can have specific programs is if we ask the public if they're willing to fund them. Or, we can choose to direct the administrator to take the money out of the General Fund, cut it, and lay people off, fund the Department on Aging. So, those are your choices.
Okay, so then if the, if this millage doesn't pass, and the General Fund is contributing nothing, um, Department of Aging is gonna rely on, totally on federal and state grants, client donations, Medicaid and other revenues, and that's all they will have?
Well, that looks correct. That is incorrect, because you have to have a funding source to give matching money to federal government and state government to be able to tap those grants. If you're not giving matching money, you're not able to do that. So, then you're leaning on the federal government completely to take care of our seniors, and I don't believe the residents of the County of Jackson are willing to do that.
Well, if there's no General Fund funding, and the millage doesn't pass...
Then you have no senior ability to do stuff.
That's what I said, okay.
Correct. You're cutting the Department of Aging off at the knees, or choosing to not fund seniors.
Good. I understand that.
Certainly. Cory?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Baer's initial concern, I have the same one. I personally believe that any millage should go on the November ballot, so that the highest voter turnout makes that decision. So, I also agree that it, first of all, should be on the November ballot. Secondly, current millage that's expiring was .25, and now we're increasing to .6. You know, that's over a 140% increase. I understand, the director came to us and said, "That's what we need to maintain the current services." I believe that the voter should have a choice to keep it either currently at the .25, somewhere in the middle of the .5 that, uh, she gave us some documentation on, or the .6 option. So, in essence, not necessarily cutting the services completely, but given the option that 144% increase going on everyone's tax bill doesn't necessarily have to happen.
While your analogy of 144% is correct, as you interpret .25 to .6, the county in the past has contributed the difference, so people have already been paying it out of the General Fund at this time, so, and we've come to the conclusion, and we all voted for that budget, that we need to fund it in a different way. So, again, if we wanna go back and do this, we need to take $146,000 out of the General Fund budget to keep senior millage and senior funding correct. And I'll tell you right now, this is one of the hardest arguments that I have, until I get out there and I see that the seniors that this helps and takes care of are the people that need to be taken care of. This is not the people at the country club. Okay, this is not those seniors. These are the people who can't take care of themselves. They're the indigent population. It's not like we're asking for this money to fund people's trips to Florida, okay? We're asking to help take care of these people who have to make a choice between eating and getting a prescription filled, okay? And a lot of times, they choose to eat, not get their meds. We're here to help them do that, is what we're doing, and we're asking the people...
And, and I recognize that, Mr. Chair, and certainly it's needed, and that's why I'm suggesting maybe not necessarily that large of an increase, but a different option to the voters, to where meals on wheels would still be available to the seniors. Uh, but perhaps some of the programs, they may need to be trimmed. If we can't afford it as a county, I don't feel it's always responsible to continuously go to the voters and say, "We need another millage increase on your tax bill."
Who do you go to? They're your customers. Yes, sir.
I just wanted to, to be able to add a, a comment. Under, under normal conditions, um, I would, I would feel the exact same way as Commissioner Baer and Commissioner Kennedy, that I would prefer to see this on a November ballot in this situation, uh, with, with knowing the significant impact that a failure of this millage would have on this community, and what we would have to then pivot and be able to have time to do for the following year. I would, I would definitely be okay with seeing on the, on the, on the August ballot. Um, but for the sake of time, I would like to call the question.
Understand that by calling the question, you're making a motion to call the question only.
Completely understood.
Completely understood. Do you have, does anyone have support? You have a motion and support to call the question? We are stopping debate, and we will be calling the question on the millage.
Mr. Chair, can I offer?
No, sir. No, sir. We have a motion and support. There's no discussion after that. I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Yes, sir.
So, to be clear, we're not voting on the millage proposal, we're voting on stopping debate to vote on it.
Correct. And the vote, the vote on the millage will follow immediately. No, sir. Correct. So, question to stop debate. All the questions are... Motion fails. I'm going to go to Commissioner Elwell first, and then we'll come back around the room.
Just one comment, Mr. Chair. I sat through part of Marcy's presentation on it, and one of the key statements I heard from Marcy was that the programs that Department on Aging does with this millage money, or the General Fund money right now, is allow the elderly to age in place, many times staying in their own homes, their own apartments, and I think to do otherwise would, uh, potentially overwhelm the system, and I support the millage, uh, amount, and also the date of it that's proposed, but, uh, I think the service is a provider critical, and I wanna see him continue the same way. I also think back to, uh, the budget cuts that we did last year, where it hit the Health Department, and people were up in arms over that, or departments were up in arms over that, or maybe a department was. And if we were to not have the millage as requested and have to continue, I think I heard you say a figure of $743,000 from General Fund, where pretty well would we cut that from if we wanna continue the programs offered by the Department on Aging, and I can't fathom where we would pull it from. And I think it needs to be said that, I think, Mr. Chair, you said it, um, that with headly, the revenues are not keeping up with expenses because of Prop A, and something has to give somewheres, and I, I think the voters will understand that. Thank you.
I believe Mr. Kennedy had his hand.
Thank you. I agree with a lot of what Commissioner Elwell said. I just believe that voters should have a choice, and it shouldn't just be necessarily .6 or nothing. I believe there could be other solutions, and I don't see a problem with putting all three on the ballot, and if it's, if that's clearly what the voters want, they want the .6, well, they'll vote for it. But I'm telling you right now, from people I've spoken to in the community, not everybody is on board with that. And you could vote in a .25 or a .5 mill and still have services to the seniors, still be eligible for the grant. You may have to downsize a little bit, yes. You may have to tighten your budget a little bit, yes. That's for the community to decide.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Uh, if, if, if by chance this, this goes on the August ballot and it, it fails, would there be additional time for another ballot measure to be put together for the November?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then, thank you, and then my next question, uh, would be, um, or, I, that'll be it for me.
I would be appointed something by the clerk, the clerk tells anybody, August 11, 2020, we would have to have, I have like fifteen minutes. Which, with your microphone, which motion are you gonna make, sir?
I would like to make a motion to change the election from occurring at the August primary to occurring at the November general election. Support.
Hey, we have a motion and support, so everyone understands, if you're voting yes, you're moving it to November.
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, I, I think we had the main motion on the floor already, did we not?
Dealing with this has an amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the motion, the motion failed? Or to the main motion?
I would like to offer an amendment to offer three options to the voters of .25, .5, and .6.
Hey? You have a motion and support? If you, yes, sir?
Just for clarification, if this, uh, motion does pass, and let's say it follows, the voters come back and they vote and say, "We want the..."
The highest millage wins.
Okay, so in the event that the middle motion is, uh, approved by the voters, then the monies that would be needed to continue all services, would that come from General Treasury?
Uh, the board will then be given the opportunity to choose, where they have the responsibility as a commissioner to decide whether he reduces General Fund or reduces them.
That's it. Okay, thank you, nothing further.
Yep. A voting, voting yes on this amendment would create a three-tiered millage, correct?
Correct, correct.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Correct, Mr. Chair.
We are now at the main motion to approve the resolution to place .6 mills ten-year from 2020 to 2029 senior millage upon the ballot on the August 4th primary ballot to maintain services to seniors of Jackson County. We have a motion and support. Clerk, did you post the vote? Thank you. And voting yes puts it on the ballot, voting no goes away. Vote passed unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen, for the debate. I appreciate it. I hope I handled that one well. Try it again, ready? Commissioner Mahoney? Are you complete?
That concludes our business for the Human Services tonight, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Commissioner Duckham, Chair's General Government Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You have notes and everything in front of you, sir?
Excellent.
Excellent.
Yeah, first up, we have appointments. Uh, Brownfield Redevelopment...
Donfield Redevelopment Committee. The new term will be until 2023. We have a township representative. The applicant was Jim Dunn, who was the current member, and the committee recommended Jim Dunn.
Any other nominations from the floor? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry it.
Second nomination is for City Council Representative. Currently, it's Kelsey Heck. That is at the pleasure of the city to send their applicant over. We don't have the city's applicant yet. Third would be a Consumer Energy Representative, Brad Runkel. He's a current member and Brad Runkel has re-applied. Committee recommends Brad Runkel. I'd make that a motion.
No motion in support. I would like to clarify this. This is not specific to Consumers Energy, but this is, it is either a utility or a railroad representative according to the... All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do the carry. Mr. Duckham?
Here. Next up, we have the Economic Development Corporation Council Representative. The representative was Kelsey Heck. She no longer, she did not reapply. We have no, the city will send over their choice. Third, Planning Commission for Industrial Economic Representative, Amy Guerrero. She is retiring. We have no applicant. That's all for appointments. Next up, we have General Government Park, Lime Lake Park Eastman.
And in the form of a motion? Sir. They have support? We have discussion. We're at the Lime Lake... Hearing none? All in favor? Opposed? Do the carry. Phil? You have a motion? Questions? If there are, please show them as itemized and get with staff after you've initialled them. They'll answer those questions for you. All in favor? Opposed? Carry it. Looking for a motion? Motion? You have support? We have discussion.
And I don't know if this is the proper time, Mr. Chair, but I just want to clarify again this question, that there's no other surprises in the building of our American One Event Center.
Best of my knowledge, yes.
Your administrator?
Lord, I hope not.
Okay, thank you.
But you know, the truth is, you don't know because a surprise is a surprise.
Know what you don't know.
Add that at the end, man.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. Mr. Duckham? Have a motion? Looking for support? Discussion? Commissioner Bear?
My mic, sir. A while back when this first came to the Board of Commissioners, we asked that the parks get some assessments, that they... Independent appraisals, they complete a land use plan for development of the park. To this point, I have not seen a land use plan for the development of the park. We are cutting so much money in other areas. I personally don't want to spend this money. We've got better uses for that money. Blackman Township is developing a park that's one mile upriver from this location. I've discussed the park's plan for the access points along this river. Two access points one mile apart really isn't going to prove your accessibility to this river overall. Being in light of our budget constraints and that we have seen no development plan for the park, I don't plan on supporting this one.
Other Commissioner comments? Corey?
I just have a question for clarification. Are we under committee here to forward it to the board or are we taking action here?
Taking action at this time.
Thank you.
So just a question for clarification. I notice in here that the county's responsibility is around $54,000. I'm just curious if there's any ongoing costs that the county would incur or expenses that the county would have by acquiring this property?
Yes, there would be some ongoing maintenance costs that we would build into our budget. We think it'd be minimal, though. There wouldn't be a ton to mow. It's more of a natural area, so there'd be likely a parking lot with river access that would likely be a grant application that would be based on. But minimal maintenance costs of around $5,000 a year.
All right.
So my position is this, again, it's my outlook on millages. You know, we went to the voters saying we didn't have enough money to fund our parks and it was pressed hard to the public as such. And if we didn't do this, parks were going to be shut down. I don't see growing our parks, acquiring more, actually having to pay to purchase it and then having ongoing cost as a good thing. As a matter of fact, I think we probably should be downsizing the amount of parks that we have and giving them to the townships. So that's my outlook on it. I'm not in favor of taking on additional cost to the county, especially when we went to the voters not long ago and said, hey, you need to pass this millage or parks are going to get shut down. I don't see the urgent need to acquire another one.
Any other Commissioner comments? Mr. Elwell?
Mr. Chair, what kind of timeline are we on for the grant application if it were to be postponed for another meeting to give Commissioners time to think about it?
The difficulty from what I understand is that the landowner then would want to put it up for private sale. And we would be a full year before we could ask trust fund again.
So we'd be beyond the trust fund application date then? I see.
Am I correct?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, one more question if I could. So if we ended up by getting the grant buying this, what restrictions would there be on us with that property? In other words, if five years from now we haven't developed it much, would we be able to sell it?
I don't believe the grant would allow that, though.
Okay.
Well, I believe it would allow it, but it would penalize us for future grants, basically.
Usually what happens is you have to refund the difference. You have to pay, you have to give back to the...
If I may?
Yeah.
Generally true, although if you were to deed or transfer or sell it to another government entity, be it a township or something like that where it operates as a park, well, then they'd be fine with that.
Any further comments? S62. Commissioner Duckham? Yes? Have a motion? Have support? Questions? I'll start with Tony. Turn your mic on.
Thank you. This resolution says that the county obligation amounts to $500,000. We can't come up with 300 some thousand for the Department of Aging, but we can come up with $500,000 for...
Separate the two, sir, because the $500,000 comes directly out of the park's millage and was in the park's millage plan when we went to the voters.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
Yes, sir. Any further questions, Tony? Any further questions? Corey?
Very similar to what I said last time. Again, on an acquiring more land, add a cost to us. It's also going to have long-term costs. I'm not going to be redundant. You heard what I said last time. I don't feel how you can consider yourself being fiscally responsible and continue doing things like this, so I won't support it.
Well, I guess, Corey, my question to you would be then, how do you finish the Mike Levine trail that we committed to 11 years ago? When you put it in the park's millage and told everyone you were going to do this?
I didn't tell anyone that. I don't believe I was here 11 years ago to clarify.
No, no, I'm referring to the park's millage ballot. That's when it appeared and I realize this body did it and you're a member of this body.
That's correct, sir.
Well, I believe you take credit or fault for all of our decisions, good or bad. My mind, I do.
In my mind, I feel this would be a bad decision.
Okay. Appreciate that and I appreciate your opinion.
Yep, and I don't need to have any further debate. I know where I'm at on it, so...
Okay. Certainly.
Did I hear correctly or interpret what you said correctly, that this specific project was enumerated in the park's millage that was passed?
It was announced that we were going to work with the governor's office to complete the Ironbell Trail. Yes, it was part of the language. It says right on the flyer. We reprinted the flyer and made it available to everybody.
Was it in the millage itself language?
Not directly in the ballot language, no. But it was on the document and the flyer and the communication and everything that we took out to everybody. It was in the presentations we made to the different townships. Other questions? Phil?
Well, I think this is quite expensive. It's, like I said, standing committee meetings, it's more expensive than a mile of road, mile of trail. Work the trail across the state, so I'm going to have to support it.
Any further comments?
Restate what you just said. I'm sorry. I didn't catch the last part.
Committed a few years back to assist and do our part in this trail across the state of Michigan. It would be a complete waste if we did not complete it and connect the trails. So I think it's too expensive. But at this point in time, it'd be like throwing maybe out with the bathwater because we've already got the other money spent on the other trails. We have to connect them at this point, so I will support it. Might not do it again, but I'll support this because we committed to it earlier on and through different projects.
Yes?
You? Sorry, you know, because talking a lot about things in the past when I wasn't here. So my apologies for not being up to speed on that. Are there less expensive options that could be considered that could connect the trail?
My understanding is that they got this pathway to where we're at is the least expensive option possible because we attempted to bring the trail up to Cooper Street and run it across Cooper Street on M106 to bring it around on Lansing Avenue and to bring it across Lansing Avenue Bridge to bring the enhancement down just one side of the river to bring it down. Find as many, yes, this is, they've really explored as many options as we can. That's why it wasn't completed before this, but also the revenue wasn't there nor the commitment from Jackson County Park.
Thank you for the explanation.
Yeah. This gets us from Monroe Street, that's finished right now, to beyond the prison, correct?
Well, to Cooper and Parnell, yes.
Yeah.
The DNR is building from the prison to...
Correct. You have to remember that the state has spent the money all the way to, we're here on, or found money and that's what our match here, part of our match is, is private funds also being donated by its, named what it's named, Mike Levine.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just one comment for me. I talked with Commissioner Duckham about it and he made the comparison that the cost of the trail is more than for a similar amount of roadway, number one. Don't know if that's true or not. Feel pretty good with the numbers, but we're not approving the expenditure of the money to build a trail. We're approving the grant application right now. So Commissioner Kennedy will get another run at this and we have our Road Department Director overseeing parks now and he's pretty good at building roads, so maybe he can come up with some creative ways to keep the cost down when it comes to building it. But I didn't throw you out of the bus and say it was you, but there you are.
Ready to vote, Commissioners? Mr. Bear? Microphone?
I understand this is a grant proposal that we're going to be authorizing, but under paragraph now, therefore be it resolved. Bold type, financial obligation amount of $500,000. So we're not just authorizing a submission of a grant application. We're agreeing to a financial obligation of half a million dollars.
And if the state denies us that grant, we get our half million dollars back.
Can I add to that?
Yes, sir.
This is the second grant application that we've applied for, for this project. So that commitment was pretty much made last June. That matches what the resolution for the TAP grant was, basically, last June. So this can be used towards the match for a previous grant, basically. But there was a previous commitment for this project, is what I'm saying.
Behind everything. S62. Mr. Duckham, General Government. You. You have no unfe... You, you have no unfinished business to come before the Board? Under new business, amended 2020 remuneration plan. Any motion? Motion of support? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution of support, with no dollars attached at this time, to Blackman Park DNR grant, Canary Lane River Access. Motion in support? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution of support, Blackman DNR grant, Rod Mills Nature and Fitness Trail. Motion in support? Questions? What we're doing is saying that we acquiesce to Blackman, and that we support them in doing an independent fitness trail in Rod Mills Park, which they own.
What?
Yeah.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Public comment? Any public comment? Please state your name, you have two minutes to address the Board at this time, you may only address the Board once under public comment opportunity, and may not yield your time to others, Board members will not debate or answer questions at this time. Public comment? Any public comment? Last shot. Public comment is now closed, Commissioner comments? Mr. Mahoney?
I just had a question, I mean, I'm sure everybody knows what's going on in our community right now, especially with, uh, Jackson just, uh, today announcing that we had a, um, a, a positive test, uh, for COVID nineteen, I'm, I'm curious, uh, if our administrator has considered offering, uh, the temporary suspension of our nonessential, um, employees, uh, for, for their safety and security, uh, if not, um, is that something that we can discuss and consider at this time?
At this time, the administration is taking under advisement, along with emergency management, the Health Department, and all department heads, and they met for two hours today discussing all of their alternatives, they are reviewing current union contracts and employment agreements between elected and appointed officials, to put together a direct response to our employees to continue to maintain their safety, and for the county to continue performing its government services. By his people, we do have to function as a county.
That's absolutely understandable, I just, um, just, just hope we can, uh, move expeditiously, uh, and I would, I would, uh, please, I would, I would please like to be included in those conversations as well, thank you.
Well, the administrators kept you up to date, because-
And I'm sorry, you said what meeting was had, and who was invited to that meeting?
Department heads and elected officials, they weren't, it wasn't a, it wasn't a meeting as in like this room, they were online, and they had discussion via telephone com-
Well, I'm an elected official also, Mr. Chair, and I was not included in that conversation.
I, Daniel, I wasn't there either.
But there either.
I understand, I'm, I, I understand, I wasn't speaking on, on anybody else's behalf who may have been there, I just was simply stating that I wasn't there, and I think that it would behoove us to make a, a swift decision, uh, for the safety of our, our employees, is, is what my point was.
Fine, and then we're doing that.
And I'd just like to be included in, in, in any additional information on that topic, please, thank you.
Philwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to be clear, when, uh, you or the administrator mention elected officials, I think the reference is to the high elected officials that have employees that are supporting it to them, is why it's mentioned like that, but no Commissioner, I wasn't there, and no other Commissioner I know of was there, so, for what that's worth.
Missus, other questions? Motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.